Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, Tumwater City Council. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leetta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Othouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I'm present. Councilmember Von Holtz will start us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, our first item is a introduction. Yes?
Um, I, I wanted to request to make an, an addition to an item in tonight's meeting. Um, this is a request that I made via email that was declined by both you and Administrator Parks. Council received an email from a constituent who did a public disclosure request, which included information regarding a permit requested by the city in February 2024 to remove the Gary, the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree. This calls the timeline we were given in last week's meeting into question. And sorry, since nothing about the tree was mentioned to us until March of 2024. So I moved out of timeline discussion of the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree to tonight's agenda. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to move that, and I believe you are requesting that to be under council considerations?
Yes, please.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, we will add that to the agenda for council consideration.
Thank you.
All right, now with that, we will go ahead and introduce the new police officer. And I will, I have the introductions done by Carlos.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this police officer here in the city of Tumwater. It is a testament to this young man's dedication to this community, his character, his motivation and dedication. The fact that he passed the academy, passed our field training program and is standing here today for us to introduce to you is absolute great achievement. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jack Badamer, who was born in and spent the first five years of his life in Mongolia. At five, his family immigrated to the United States and settled in Colorado where his parents still live. Jack is the middle child, having both an older and younger sister. Jack went on to attend college in New York where he met his wife, Jocenia, before enlisting in the US Army. Jack served eight years in the military with his last duty station being JBLM in 2023. During this time, the Bademers added to their family with the birth of a daughter who is nearly three years old. Jack was honorably discharged at the rank of Staff Sergeant and continues to serve as a member of the Washington National Guard. Jack joined the Tumwater Police Department on March 2nd, 2023 and spent the first four months in our pre-academy training program. Jack entered the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on July 11th, 2023 and was selected as a squad leader. Jack spent 17 weeks, which is 720 hours of training at the academy, graduating on November 14th, 2023, and becoming a certified Washington State Police Officer. Additionally, during the academy, Jack was recognized for his completing two four-hour challenges. The force and fitness challenge, which is 40 hours of extra defensive tactics training and multiple repetitions of skill, and the scholarship enrichment challenge, which is a reading and essay writing enrichment learning experience. Jack returned to Tumwater Police Department and completed an additional 80 hours of post-academy training before entering the field training program. Jack successfully completed the 14-week field training officers program on March 14th, and his first day of being assigned to a patrol team and working as a solo patrol officer was March 17th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jack for any comments.
Mayor, council members, I, uh, I'm not used to public speaking, so I appreciate you all taking the time to speak with me. Um, just real short, I really appreciate everybody taking the time introducing myself. And I know, being a new officer, I have a lot to learn, learning new stuff every day. And I'm just proud and very grateful to have the members of the team that I'm working with around me as well. Thank you.
I, I believe we have a question.
Thanks, Mary. I'm just wondering, listening to that is amazing. And so pretty confident you could go anywhere that you wanted to go. So why did you choose Tumwater?
Councilmember, I chose Tumwater because I already established roots here. Um, even though I live in Lacey, I
What?
I, I have a background in volleyball. I've played for about 14 years and to the point where I, after I was done playing, I wanted to coach. And one of my first positions was coaching over at Black Hills High School. Um, I grew really close to the staff and the kids there. Um, unfortunately, due to my work schedule, I wasn't able to continue, but I still keep close ties to the faculty members there. And just being in that, uh, just scenario and the environment that I was there just really pulled me into the city.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I want to welcome you to the, to Tumwater and present you with our city pencil. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You bet. All right, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Public Works Week, uh, May 19th to the 25th. Councilmember Swarthout will be reading that proclamation.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, public works programs and services for Tumwater are a joint effort of the Water Resources and Sustainability Department and the Transportation and Engineering Department. Together, they provide essential services that are an integral part of our community, such as water, sewer, stormwater, streets and sidewalks, fleet maintenance, engineering and geographic information systems. And whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and the well-being of the people of Tumwater. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, natural resources, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for the people in our city. And whereas, it is in the public interest of the individuals, businesses, civic leaders and youth in Tumwater to learn about and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works program. And therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of Tumwater, does hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2024, Public Works Week, and calls upon the people of the city of Tumwater to learn about our public works facilities and services and to recognize our water resources and sustainability and transportation and engineering employees for the substantial contributions they make to protect our health, safety, comfort and quality of life in Tumwater.
Great, thank you. Go ahead. Steph?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Patrick Soderbergh. I'm the Water Resources and Sustainability Program Manager. I'm here with my colleague Mark Leback, who is the Tumwater's Transportation Operations Manager. And we're very pleased to be here and accept this proclamation. This year's theme for National Public Works Week is advancing quality of life for all. And we want to take a moment to think about what that means for the city of Tumwater. The idea is that our Public Works Department conducts activities that promote and sustain safe and healthy conditions for our community. I believe this year's theme is appropriate because it recognizes the value of our community's infrastructure and the public services performed by our public work staff. The theme emphasizes our role in continuous improvement, demonstrated through our roadway projects, expansion of our drinking water system, conversion of septic systems to sewer and management of our natural resources.
Public Works Week gives us a chance to celebrate all the public works employees that silently work to support our thriving community. Much of our, uh, much like our strategic priorities, our vision and our mission statement, this year's theme, advancing the quality of life for all. Our public works professionals advance the quality of life by planning, designing, building, managing and operating the infrastructure in rights of way that allows us all to enjoy and grow in our community. Whether it's providing services in water, wastewater, transportation, uh, resource sustainability, right-of-way management or fleet services, the public works team are always on the ready to serve our community.
On behalf of our two departments and all of our colleagues who work together to provide daily public work services, we thank you for your support and for this recognition. Thank you for celebrating this week with us and acknowledging the importance of the streets, pipes, pumps, sidewalks, plans, budgets and projects for the everyday quality of life for those in Tumwater. This Thursday, we will be celebrating by getting together for some fun and recognition of the work that is accomplished every day by members of the Water Resources and Sustainability and Transportation and Engineering Departments. Hopefully, we'll get some beautiful weather to enjoy as well. With that, let us thank you once more for this recognition. We are so happy to be able to contribute to our community's well-being.
So I want to say thank you to everyone for all the hard work of keeping our city going. There, there's a lot of work that does with this. So here's the proclamation. And
Very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is public comment. Uh, so at this time, we will receive public comment. You may comment on items related to city business not scheduled for the public hearing. So we do have a public hearing today, which is on the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program. So public comment is for that, uh, not including that. So if you sign up for comments during the public hearing, your comments are related. So do not sign up for the public hearing if your comments are related to the Davis Meeker Oak Tree. Please come up during public comment section. Uh, you, we will not hear comments about, uh, we will hear, we will, uh, not hear comments about, uh, the Gary Oak Tree during our public hearing portion. At that time, we is reserved for resolution number 2024-004, the six-year transportation plan. There are signup sheets available in the back of the room for people wishing to sign up for both the public comment and the public hearing. When I call your name, come to the podium, speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Each individual will be limited to one three-minute period to make their remarks, regardless of the number of topics they wish to address. All comments shall be directed toward, uh, shall be directed towards the council as a whole, not to individual council members and not members of the audience. Please refrain from disruptive behaviors such as booing, hissing, audible comments, cheering and clapping. Uh, and so with that, we will go ahead and start the public comment portion. And is there anyone online registering?
Have one, two, three, four. Seven people online.
Okay, all right. Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead again.
There are seven people online. Would you like to start with online or in person?
We'll start with online. And again, state your name for the record and three minutes.
Okay, so I have Bayworth Brower followed by Ray Gleason, so I am going to allow Bayworth to talk right now.
Bayworth Brower, Olympia, Washington. I'm an arborist here once again to advocate for the Davis Meeker Oak. I've attended half a dozen meetings now concerning this tree and have read the reports in depth. The city's arborist, Kevin McFarland, made multiple mistakes in his assessment. When pressed by Historic Preservation Board to explain them, he claimed they were all innocent typos. Accidents happen, but for them to happen several times in a row on a report that took months to write and totaled a half a dozen pages, this is either sloppy work or a report written as means to an end. In either eventuality, this tree deserves better. A place that calls itself a tree city should categorically reject shoddy work such as this. After a branch fell last summer, three arborists have physically inspected the tree. Of them, only Mr. Burton and Mr. McFarland have published reports. Here's a quick summary of their methodologies and findings. Mr. Burton inspected trees in sonic tomography, which is akin to an MRI for plants, provides a two-dimensional view of the interior of the tree. This data was run through an engineering load calculator to determine the stability of the tree as measured. His findings demonstrably showed the tree was currently stable and recommended pruning to reduce future risks. Mr. McFarland hired an arborist to climb the tree and strike it repeatedly with a mallet while he listened from the ground upwards of 40 feet away. From this, he determined the tree should be cut down. Notwithstanding the extreme differences in thoroughness of the inspection methodology, it's an even tie between these arborists to remove or retain the tree. I would gladly speak ad nauseam about the nature of fungal heart rot, the sealing abilities of parent chyme cells and the quercus species, the importance of proper pruning on street trees, but I am extremely limited in time by this forum. The susciant point is this. An action wrought by fear and fueled by faulty data will, in the final sense, constitute a theft, irrevocable deprivation of this exemplar tree from future generations of both man and creature. Mayor's decision is an affront to nature, the citizenry, abhorri culture and statistics. The odds of being individually injured by a tree are astronomically low. This is well documented fact. I have sent a very easy and brief paper from the NIH to the council demonstrating this. Notwithstanding the other lack of communication about the decision to remove the tree with a single stakeholder, there is a valid code challenge as well. By condemning the tree against the decision of the City Council Historic Preservation Board and the citizens of Tumwater, the mayor and city administrator are in violation of Tumwater Municipal Code 2.62.060, which stipulates that any person, including mayors, seeking to demolish a historic structure need to be granted a waiver by the historic board. To date, no waiver has been granted. As such, neither the mayor nor city administrator have the authority to order this tree cut down. Furthermore, there is nothing in the municipal code that authorizes the mayor to initiate a high-dollar contract absent a vote from the council. I implore this council to make a motion barring any expenditures related to the removal of individual trees absent a council or tree board vote in perpetuity. I further beg, use the tree fund to hire a consulting arborist to review the case for and against the tree. Godspeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person?
And the next to speak will be, uh, Ray Gleason.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yes. On August 26th, 2023, Davis Meeker Oak Tree Summary of Recent Actions and Status was noted by the Tumwater Board. That was not released to the public. On this, that statement, my personal name was, is noted. I'm noted as one of 18 external stakeholders. I am labeled Ray Gleason, arborist. I was never contacted. I questioned how many of the other 18 external stakeholders were contacted. Um, it labels tribes as one of those, it labels them as all, as some of the stakeholders. Again, I questioned how many or if any of them were contacted. Um, this is very disappointing from a public standpoint. Um, and again, I, I asked to retract and work more effectively from a public perspective. I would prefer working towards an amicable so, solution. I would say, therefore, there is time for appropriate assessment using appropriate science and analysis before making management decisions that will forever impact what is available to be shared with future generations. A tree with such historic significance deserves our patience as well as being mindful of safety. This is a balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now it'll be Karina Murphy followed by Walt Jorgensen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Karina Murphy. I've been a member of this community for 11 years. This has very much saddened me. What is happening to the Meeker Oak is visibly healthy. And I believe, based on the arborist's reviews, that proper trimming should address any dead branches. The species is a protected species. I even have one in my yard. It's historic. It's over 400 years old. I decided to take matters into my own mind, my hand, and on next door, I did a survey of whether there should be a public hearing before cutting or demolishing this tree. And I have 62 affirmative that say that there should be a public hearing before moving forward with any kind of motion to cut, trim or otherwise evaluate, do any harm to the tree. Does the road expansion, is that the part of what is causing this? It doesn't mean, see, make any sense to me that we're moving ahead so fast. We need to give it time. We need to have proper arborist reports in file. And it should be more than one arborist that makes that decision. And it should be a public hearing of the results to the public and announced and not, not private. I am very disappointed in the council. I'm very disappointed in the mayor. I cannot tell you how saddened I am. I really am. And I hope that you will move forward and be open as you should be. As this is America, and I thought we had gotten away from hiding politics under the cover. Thank you very much. It's my hope that moving forward, there'll be honest efforts and open efforts to the public. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Now I'll allow Walt Jorgensen to talk.
Good. No, it looks like I'm unmuted. Um, and, uh, I, I just have to say, I'm, I'm pleased to see that the city has upgraded to a pin from the wooden pencil, pencils that were given away to people during the Osford commit days. It's a nice upgrade. A surprise, I have some comments about an oak tree. You've had a couple of heavy hitters weigh in on the Davis Meeker Gary Oak issue, Bayworth Brower, who works for the state and you've just heard from, and Robert Van Pelt, probably the preeminent big tree authority in the nation. Both of these learned gentlemen explain why our tree is not at the end of its existence and why it should not be abruptly terminated for no good reason. I know Mr. Brower has shared all of his material with the council. I hope the council will choose to consider his research and analysis and share it with the public in public at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, two weeks hence. I'm sure Mr. Van Pelt would be glad to share his evaluation with us on request, probably at the same gathering. I have some trees of my own, a third of an acre in Olympia, another half acre in Tumwater and 10 acres south of county. I get monthly offers to buy my timber. That's never going to happen. I'm in the process of putting the South County trees into a conservation easement with capital land trust. Following the lead of my neighbor to the north, Vince Cutoni, and my former neighbor to the south, Jack Davis, who shares his name with our oak tree. I would no sooner allow the Davis Meeker Oak Tree to be terminated than to trespass on what was Jack's property and cut one of his trees down. My trees are fairly old, but at almost 200, even the oldest are less than half as old as the oak tree. I think the Davis Meeker Gary Oak is a poster child for the Rights of Nature Initiative in our county. When I was firsthand at the petition titled Standing for the Bud, I noticed a prominent warning, only city of Olympia registered voters may sign. I asked, what about Tumwater? I was immediately provided with another petition titled Standing for the Deschutes. That one covers Tumwater. If you want to know more about the Rights of Nature Initiative, contact me at waltjorgensen@comcast.net. If you want to know more about plans for the Davis Meeker Gary Oak, attend the Tumwater City Council meeting on June 4th. Unfortunately, the meeting next week is a work session at which the city does not entertain comment from the public. And read the lead article I just did in today's joke. Arborist to Tumwater, Save the Davis Meeker Oak in Open Letter to Tumwater Mayor Debbie Sullivan and City Administrator Lisa Parks, submitted by Scott D. Baker, Registered Consulting Arborist. Um, the bottom line is, uh, um, your honor and city administrator, I think you simply got this one wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'll have Jesse Brighton followed by Janice Klinsky.
Hi, uh, my name is Jesse Brighton, uh, would be Iowa in Washington. I'm an ISA certified arborist, qualified tree risk assessor. I have closely 20 years of experience in my industry here in Washington State. The, all the assessments I've read and looked at regarding this oak tree are incredibly suspect, uh, on the city's staff. Um, I'm here in support of all my colleagues who have spoken out at this council meeting and the previous meetings regarding this oak tree. There are many options short of removal present where the tree could be salvaged for a very long extended period of time. A crown reduction can offer, a 10% crown reduction can offer over 50% stability on the part produced. Um, I, I keep gesturing because I think I'm on screen. Um, there are some limitations to sonic tomography and reading the city's arborist reports. There are egregious errors in his risk assessment. Sounding is typically an indication of where to look further. It, it's tapping on the wood. If it sounds hollow, well, maybe it's hollow or maybe it's not. But this is a good spot to start where to look further with more advanced assessments. A level three assessment of, a climbing assessment of the entire crown with sonic tomography could potentially reveal decay pockets, et cetera. All of these could be mitigated with crown reduction, cabling, possibly even as extreme as what we call retrenchment pruning, which is championed in European countries. It's catching on here in the States, uh, where some of the oak trees in the Sherwood Forest written about in literature being IDed in churchyards, et cetera, are over 900 years old. There is no reason why this tree could not be a potential candidate for, uh, treatments like that. So I would not, uh, let other people speak. I don't want to take too much time. I'm also, uh, very curious though, uh, about tribal input. This is a cornerstone. This is a tree that has been here pre-settlement, pre-colonialism, pre-Izzy Stevens. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Uh, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And now I'll have Janice Klinsky, which is the last online comment.
Klinsky, um, this is my first time. I've been online at the council meeting. Um, I want to speak about the, the Gary Oak Tree. I'm really upset about it. I feel like, I, okay, so every time I drive out past the airport and I see this tree, I feel like this tree is a survivor and it's, I can just feel its life force. And it just is so inspiring and empowering to me. It just makes my heart sore. And I feel like I think, well, up until, up until just a couple of days ago, I, every time I passed it, I used to think, oh, how wise of the city people to keep this tree right next to the highway. It's obviously a huge and beautiful tree. And I just think, you know, the people who decided to keep this tree here and it are really wise and and it just, it just is such a benefit to, to drive past this tree. And I was, I just drove past it the other day. And these were what I was thinking is like, thank, you know, thankfully, people want to appreciate this beautiful piece of nature. It just adds so much to the surrounding area in my experience of it. And then I, for some reason, I suddenly found out that you're thinking of cutting it down. I, I just can't comprehend that. I was reading all these reports and all the arborists, none of them think that the tree is dead or needs to come down. And just looking at it, you can see even if a branch falls, it's not going to fall on the whole bunch of people. There's, people don't even hang out under that tree. I don't know. That just doesn't make any sense to me. I just implore you, please, listen to the real arborists. All the people that already spoke had very good points to say. And they have way more education than I do on this point. But I really implore you that this is a valuable asset to our community. And it just, it just brings a feeling of peace and strength. And I think we all really need that. And I just would like to ask the council and the mayor to please, please listen to the arborists and the community. Please ask us what we, what we want and show, show us real leadership.
All right, three minutes.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. First, I'm going to ask staff if they can get both sign in sheets. I don't think anyone else is signing in, so I can just double check and make sure that I have everyone signed up on the right sheets. So in council chambers is Sue Sikora. Come and to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, I'm Sue Sikora, Harrison, 2103 Harrison Ave, Olympia. And it's my first time coming here. So thank you for creating this space for people to share their thoughts on this. Also, the Meeker Oak is what I'm speaking to. And the historical oak tree, the Meeker Davis Oak tree, it's a landmark for Oregon Trail. It's an indigenous native species. Can we please find a way to preserve this living historical landmark? I see your patience and your goodwill. I am happy to help, whether it means raising funds for this project or whatever help you might need, working together with professional arborists like Scott Baker and Ray Gleason. I'm happy to give my time. Thank you for listening and thank you for all your hard work on all the difficult decisions you make every day for, for your community. I believe in your wisdom and your experience. I know you'll find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Lawrence Jacobson. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lawrence Jacobson. I live at 2628 113th Way, Southwest in Scott Lake. But this all affects me too, you know. Before I start, what I was going to say, the woman who talked about the spirit, the tree talking to her when she drives by, I still feel the ghost of the tree that's across the street from there and it used to form a little bridge. It was wonderful and I still feel that as I do that. Anyway, I moved here from Chicago in 1969 to do a land use study of all of Thurston County. At that time, there was a lot of open space with the thriving small farms and selling delicious strawberries, blueberries, and summer vegetables. Only 70,000 people lived in the county then, and I loved it. Soon large tracts of land were turned into urban zones with little public input. Many of the developers came from California. There were few regulations. Farms like the Ward Strawberry Farm with its unique sandy soil became a golf club and large tract housing area. This type of development was repeated again and again. Another example of this unbridled breed occurred when Mr. Mountain, who owned a store downtown a long time ago, he died. I was working in the basement of the courthouse annex. Roof of Realtors were outside cheering, isn't this great? Old man Mountain finally died. Now that he's gone, we can develop the west side the way we want to do it. Now we got about 300,000 people living in the county. Crime, homelessness, drug use are out of control. A great example of this is the recent development of 93rd Avenue Southeast. Old timers were horrified to see the rural landscape turn into a sea of warehouses and tacky residential developments. No bike lane was lit, was built. The developers couldn't even be bothered to put in a crosswalk to allow a 97-year-old woman to cross the street to visit her 75-year-old daughter. Now the city wants to remove the Jack Davis Oak. Most of the tree specialists so far agree that this tree can be saved at a lower cost than county and cutting it down. I urge the commissioners to not remove this tree. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrew Jacobson.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Jacobson and I live at the same place as my dad at Scott Lake. And yeah, I don't really have a whole lot to say, but I do want to, I do want to state my opinion that the oak tree should be saved and it's been here a very long time and you know, it's, it's here before, before we were even a country and you know, maybe like it could have been here at the time of Columbus, you know, who knows? The, it would be, it would be a real loss to not have it here anymore. And I think it sounds like we've heard from a lot of experts that, you know, there's, there's a million and one ways things can be done to, to keep it standing and healthy. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Larson Kramer.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Larson Kramer and I live in Olympia, 1814 East Side Street, but I have 20 acres of forest land on Old Highway 99 and 93rd. And I want to echo other people's comments. I'm here to speak about the Gary Oak, but I first want to thank the council members for all the hard work that they do. It's not easy being an elected official and I really respect everything you do. I once tried to be an elected official and didn't make it. So you all are the successful ones. People make mistakes and it's okay to make a mistake. You can always fix it. And that's what I'm here to ask to be done. I also wanted to note that there is a tendency, evolutionarily, humans have a tendency to really focus on safety. That's a good thing. You know, it's in our genes to do that, right? And so ideas of safety make us take notice more than other concepts. And I think that that also causes us to overreact sometimes. And I think that's what's happening here with, with the safety issue because trees like this, Gary Oaks have a certain way that they grow where they have a hollow tube that's surrounded by a very sturdy shell that supports a lot of weight. And it's not like most trees. So I, I think there's a, a knee jerk reaction to feel that something's unsafe without looking at the actual species. So I think we need to look at the actual species here. And I also wanted to say that being a forester, a tree farmer, I have noticed a tendency among people in the tree industry to have a immediate opinion about lack of safety of trees and wanting to cut them down. And there's, it's really an overreaction from what I see, the, the, the actual chances of something hitting people is, is very minimal. So I think it's a societal change that needs to happen when we look at trees and safety from my perspective as a tree farmer. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was all signed up there. Skip McConville, did you want to speak on this or the public hearing? Yes, you can go ahead and come up and, yes.
Name is Skip McConkey. We've been in the county for a long time. Light all the water for the beer down here. I live on Trosser Road. Came up, I know how to start, save that to a vote of the people, like I did three times to Exflorate in Olympia, taking a vote of the people. Wanted to build those towers on, nine-story towers, Treville wanted to build on. The year's first, I came to me and said, the living governor of the state of Washington, took a vote of the people. This hero is prepared to take it to vote of the people. I worked in Seattle on the Stinson Green Mansion, the first one's up in Seattle. And now the historic headquarters, the state of Washington. I was on that roof. I bought logs up in Fort Washington and delivered them. My major in the jungle, the government gave me, I think about 16, 18,000 dollars in brass black I put on it. My sister, my mom and I all lived in it. Had a sister had a catering service. Quite a home. I just sold off one over in Roseland, Washington. I saved, I was over there. It's the Phoenix House downtown. I hid out over there to get away, had a hideaway. Well, then the movie came. And to save the house, it's now a historic home over there. Movie was involved in that too. Made a few trips to Hollywood and wrote scripts. I had all the stars dating my home over there. Was quite an adventure. This trip's an adventure. Seen a lot of P38s, started to water flying around it. Went on crash in the hospital. I watched it, St. Peter's Hospital. I showed them up there where the holes were in the roof. And I quit, got the bull rider through. They were dynamite moving our house over the hill. Six in the morning, I blew dynamite and came down, crashed through our house, right next to my grandmother's bed. How they got there, where they writing all this down. And that's some gal putting in a book or something. I don't think, I think it says in that paper that there's time. Tree can be saved, but not as it is. It needs to be groomed. We all need to be groomed. They all got these proscisis and crutches and wheelchairs and that one's all out of balance. Hughid Power has had me come in, trees that big, I stood while I fell them. I had a collection of chainsaws. Before that, we had misery whips right here in Tumwater. I was on one end, my uncle was on the other. I know what a misery whip is. They had, and they had a big old saw out there with a engine on it. Cut in the wood, woodshed with it. That was nasty. Chickens left up overhead that wood, I know in the winter.
Skip, your three minutes, skip your three minutes or
Let's not continue or take that tree down. Let's look it over a bit. It needs to be groomed. I could save that tree. It'll come out. If you fertilize your garden, that tree needs some help too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Stewart. Come to the podium and name an address.
For hearing me, I wasn't going to speak. This is not what I normally do. I am a homeschool mom. So we're having a civic educational moment right now. I live in Tenino on Old Military Road Southeast. Drive by that tree every time I go to Costco. Love that tree. It is beautiful. It has outlived all of us. It has quite a story to tell. I would just really implore you to seek out an expert in that tree. As I've heard some other people mention that that specific species has a way of growing that, you know, is not like other trees. If it was in my yard, I would probably think there was something wrong with it as well. So I just really implore you to take the time and make sure that everybody does get a chance to know what's going on with the tree. We drove by it tonight on our way here and got out and I didn't even see the public notice sign until I was driving away. It just, it's kind of facing directly, it parallel with the road. So anybody driving from either direction can't even really see it. So if, if we could do a better job at just communicating to everybody, I, I found out about it on Next Door this morning when I woke up. So thank you, Karina, I think, who did that? And it just, it just really, I was, I just felt like I needed to come tonight and bring the kids because it is, it's a beautiful tree.
Thank you. All right, those are all the individuals signed up. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Pamela Hanson, PO Box 14521, Tumwater, Washington. I was just going to sit back and watch the meeting tonight, but it felt like a true disservice and non-participation. I would just like to echo everyone's comments and also bring out the fact that there are some people that emailed. I was one of them. And actually stopped by City Hall after the radio news report. So I hope you add all of that into the record with tonight's people and keep it whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the individuals signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? All right. With that, we will move from public comment to the consent calendar. Do I have anyone wanting to approve the consent calendar? Councilmember Alt Hauser.
I move we approve the consent calendar. Oh wait, we have someone, we have another public commenter.
Oh, do we have another public commenter?
Let's do that first.
I'm, I'm sorry. Let's do that. I'm sorry. Perfect. Can you state your name?
Hello, my name is Savannah Stewart. My mom just spoke and I want to say that the tree is super old. And I know it's your choice if you want to cut it down or not, but I really like the tree. And yeah, but I don't think the tree should get cut down because people could get hurt doing it. And I don't want people to get hurt because that would be bad. And when people are hurt, bad things can happen. Not everyone can help about the situation. And I think the tree should live longer so people can appreciate it. And I really like that tree. So I think it should stay there. And I think that's all I want to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for participating. All right. So anyone else, I'm going to give my more shot. Okay. Now we will go to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I, I move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second and third.
Okay. Moved by Councilmore Alt Hauser, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right. We have approved a consent calendar. With that, we have the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from May 7th, 2024. Cement vouchers, ordinance number O2024-001, which is the update to Title 15, the 2021 building code update. Ordinance number O2024-003. Ordinance number oh, twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, three. Establishing a new fund for the public safety sales tax. Resolution number R twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, three Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal. Number twenty two dash one, one, six, one. Also, the Enterprise Resource Planning System Contract Amendment Two. Interlocal data share agreement with the State Auditor's Office. Law Enforcement Records Management System. Interlocal data sharing agreement with the State Auditor's Office. And a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Yom for the housing displacement. And racial disparity impact analysis. For the housing element of the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan periodical update. So those are all the items from the, from the consent calendar. Next, we're going to go into public hearing. And this is on resolution number oh, R, sorry, resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, four, which is a six year. Transportation Improvement Program, and we will have public work staff presenting. And then we will have a public, a public hearing portion at following that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present an introduction to our six year transportation improvement program or T I P. For twenty twenty five through twenty thirty. My name is Mary Heather Ames, and I am Assistant Transportation and Engineering Director. So as you know, many of you know, this is a yearly process and each year I say roughly the same things. But this process is the foundation of transportation funding within the state of Washington, so it's worth repeating. So we'll start with a couple definitions. First, each city prepares a list of transportation projects for the next six years, which becomes their local transportation improvement program or TIP. Then those lists are submitted through the local planning organization. Ours is TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council. And it's submitted through them to the state to become the statewide transportation improvement program or STIP. So altogether, we're talking about the TIP STIP process. I would like to note the word comprehensive in that second bullet. That means that this is probably not technically achievable. But instead, we've listed as many projects as possible so that we're positioned to apply for many different types of funding. The changes to the tip this year can be grouped into three main categories. We have removals, modifications, and additions. And this is a great time to remark upon the work that our project team has been doing. The I five Trosper Project, the Israel and Linderson Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements. And the Linwin Avenue Sidewalk will all be complete this year and have been removed from our tip moving forward. Staff have also moved many projects forward and to reflect that, planned amounts for twenty five and beyond have been reduced for those projects. And finally, you'll notice a new project, which is the Somerset Hill Fish Passage Barrier Removal. That was amended into the twenty four tip STIP earlier this year and is carried forward into the twenty twenty five. Here I've shown the table from your meeting materials and what I'm going to call out a couple of the projects for your attention. The sixth item on here is the Tom Water Boulevard Interchange. This is a project that is underway, the first phase of design. Looking at improvements there for safety and to acknowledge the growth that's happening in that area of our city. On this page, there's a couple things I want to call your attention to. First, it's a good idea to call out the continuation of our pavement maintenance program. It's funded in large part by our Transportation Benefit District, and that's something you'll hear me talk about as well through every so often. But that's a large chunk of money that really improves the quality of life for the users of our street network. Additionally, the last project on this is the Somerset Hill Fish Passage Barrier Removal. And we just received word that that funding has been secured. So, very exciting. And this year, in total, this is the last page of the, of the. List of projects. And we have nearly forty five million in planned grant funding with over fifty million in local funds for a total of over ninety five million dollars. So these are very large numbers. Just a reminder that this project, this process is not financially constrained, and we do include projects here in order to be able to apply for funding. On the other hand, we have been quite successful with grant funding in the last few years, so we will do our best to complete this list. This map shows where that money will be put to work. You will notice that many of the projects are near commercial areas and services, higher volume roads. This is partly because those are the most used roads in our city. Also, they're generally federally classified, which can be requirement for grant funding. The ones, there are projects that are not shown because they're citywide, and those ones are the ones that hit the more residential streets, like our pavement maintenance and our sidewalk program. So with this, that, I ask that following the public hearing, council approve resolution R two, oh, two, four dash zero, four. Which will adopt the city's tip for the twenty twenty five through twenty thirty.
Great. Any questions before I open the public comment portion of our public hearing? Councilmember Swarthaw?
Thank you so much for your briefing. So on the list, just to clarify for people listening, so it was spelled out the first incapacity. And so these, and then it was broken out. So that's neat to see it that way. So it's organized by number that way. But just because it's number one on the list doesn't mean it's the highest priority. So just for the people that are watching.
Yes.
Any of those projects could be pulled out. How do we determine who gets to the top?
The, so you're correct. The list is not prioritized. The numbers are merely a way for us to tie between that list, the map, and then the online program that we submit our items to the state. So as far as prioritizing or choosing which projects get to move forward, it's really a case of what fits the money that is available. So we, when we have a dedicated source, say our transportation benefit district, we know that that goes to paving and will be. Doing paving projects with that. When it's a specific pot of money that's, that needs to be near a school, then we're looking at projects that are near schools. Or if it's looking for something that's sidewalk focused, maybe it's an infill. So then we're looking for a place that. Really fits the criteria. So we have a better chance of getting that money. It's, it's very much a getting to know what money is available and then picking the project that fits that money.
Any other questions before I start the public comment portion? Councilmember Althausser?
I, this isn't really a question. It's just more of a comment. Just one thing that I'm really excited about on here is we do have funding for some of the trails improvements for Deschutes Valley Drive. But one of the challenges for, for people who might be listening is we need civil engineers and staff in order to be able to deploy those dollars. If there's anyone qualified, we, we are hiring. So I, I'd be remiss if I didn't point that out, but it is really exciting to see some of that trail funding being funded. We have an opportunity to connect the false park with the golf course and beyond. I'm just really excited to see that. Yes, for funding next to those projects.
Great. Any other questions or comments before I open it up to the public hearing portion? All right, with that, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of our public hearing. Skip, you were signed up on that? Mr. McConville, you were signed up for the this. Did you want to speak to this or the other one? The, the tip? Do you want to speak to the tip? No.
I'm sorry, I'm signed up. Here, want to find out about the fish pass.
All right, so. That's, that, that is already passed. No, we've already done that. So it's already been passed. So.
And it was passed? Where's the location?
Hold, can we hold your comments until we get past the public hearing for this particular thing?
Can I find it out tomorrow or?
Yes, you can find it out tomorrow. Perfect. Yes, thank you. All right, anyone else or anyone want to speak on the tip?
I have, oops, I'm so loud. I have Walt Jorgensen online, and I'm not sure he wants to speak, but he did fill in that column. So I'm going to allow him to speak and verify.
All right, Mr. Jorgensen, did you want to speak on the tip?
And he may not.
I'm waiting for, we're working on getting connected.
He's allowed to talk, so.
Mr. Jorgensen, did you want to speak on the tip? All right, I'm not hearing anything. If you do, go ahead and submit a comment. And I'll ask for the third time anyone wanting to speak in the public comment portion of our public here. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and move to council for action. Councilmember Swarthaw?
I'd like to make a motion that the council adopt resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero, zero, four. The proposed six year transportation improvement program update for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty three, or twenty thirty, excuse me. As recommended by the Public Works Committee at their May ninth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by councilor Swarthaw, seconded by council member Althausser. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, so now we're going to move to the newly introduced item for council consideration. And council member Von Holtz brought this up. Did you want to start with your. Request to bring this to the, to council considerations?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I stated earlier, we received an email from a constituent who mentioned a permit. That had been acquired by the city in February of twenty twenty four. And so that just caused me some confusion. And since that wasn't part of the timeline that we were given last week during our work session, and it also. We never heard about any issues regarding this tree until March of twenty twenty four. So I just wanted. A discussion about the timeline again.
Great. Uh, city administrator Parks, if you want to speak to that.
Yes, I can speak generally to different dates and timelines. I can, but I, the reason for not adding it when you requested it. From my perspective was not having enough time to put together all the dates with certainty. So I will give you the dates that I have, that I've been able to do between yesterday and today. And I will also point out where there are gaps because I don't have all the information currently. So the branch fell on May sixteenth, twenty twenty three. The initial tree assessment by Kevin McFarland happened on June fourteenth of twenty twenty three. The Ariel Arborist did her evaluation on June twenty ninth of twenty twenty three. The sonic tomography was conducted on August twenty seventh of twenty twenty three. The report from Kevin McFarland was delivered to the city in October tenth of twenty twenty three. The mayor and I were first informed of this incident on October eleventh of twenty twenty three. During a regular director update that we meet quarterly. On November twenty eighth, we received information from W C I A. During that, that's an area of gap from October to, to November, because there was a lot of activity internally in terms of our staff trying to figure out. What the situation was now that we had an official report recommending removal. There was an internal meeting on December eighth. Of twenty twenty three that where we discussed the different implications. Of the report and the recommendation, as well as the recommendation of W C I A, as well as the codes related to. The Gary Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree, including the historic preservation code. The tree codes and other codes related to tree permits. The. There was an additional internal meeting in February, later February, February twenty second of twenty twenty four. There is missing information in there as well. There was a lot of internal discussions and research, as well as analysis happening over the holidays. As well as some illnesses from key staff people. There was a Friday update email with two attachments sent to the council on March first of twenty twenty four. Both of those attachments were timelines as well as status of the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree. There were several notifications during this next general timeframe that were public notifications, Facebook posts, that type of thing. I, I don't have the dates of those, but the council work session was on March eleventh where we first discussed this. The tree board was also meeting on March eleventh and was talking with folks. The Historic Preservation Commission first held their first meeting on March twenty first. They held their second meeting on April eighteenth. There was a Friday update email to the council on April nineteenth, and we had a council work session on May fourteenth. During the period of time between March first and today. There have been several other individual conversations with council members by both the mayor as well as myself. And I don't have all of the dates of those gathered. The permit that Mr. Brower. Received as a compliance for his public records request was a permit application. That was not reviewed and approved. Prior to. It was, it was an application form. So yes, the application was filled out in late February of twenty twenty four for tree removal. As we thought at the time. Yeah, correct.
Permit application.
Pardon?
It was an application, but it wasn't the permit.
Correct. It was a permit application form that had been filled out by Ted. In anticipation of needing to issue a permit for removal, which is the typical process when a tree is being requested for removal. At that same time, we had lots of questions and additional research from constituents as well as council members on what our options were. We decided and determined at a, right around that same timeframe, that it was possible to deal with the Davis. Meeker Gary Oak Tree. In an administrative fashion because of the hazard condition that it presented to the public safety. And I believe. City Attorney Kirk Patrick has provided details about that and can provide further information in terms of the legal analysis. About why we're doing what we're doing today. At this point.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. So when it's administrative function has been decided, then a permit application does not need to happen?
Correct.
Okay.
The permit is not necessary.
When it's an administrative function.
Based on our understanding of the hazardous tree condition and the determination of the city's arborist. It was determined that is a hazard tree and a permit is not required.
Right. I guess that was confusing to me is if it's being presented for input of what to do together collectively, why would an application be filed before it was even presented to council? That was the disconnect.
Yes.
Right? Is if it was to be presented to the tree board Historic Preservation Council for a discussion of what we're going to do. Why would a permit application be filed before it was even presented?
At that point in time, the understanding of our staff for this unique situation that has not ever occurred in the city of Tom Water ever before. Was that in order to issue the permit to remove the tree, the delisting needed to happen first. That was our understanding at that point in time. That's why the permit was filed. The plan, the communications plan that one of the other, that Mr. Gleason referenced. Included all of these steps in it and showed that the application was to be filed so that we could trigger. That was the triggering event for requesting to, to delist to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, councilmember Althausser, and then I'll go to councilmember Kathy.
Oh, is this on?
Yeah, it's on. It should be on.
Okay. So we heard in, in one public comment about the section of the municipal code that says that. The Historic Preservation Commission has to approve removal. the Historic Preservation Commission has to approve removal of an object or an entity, or in this case, the tree. So is it, is that, is that an incorrect, so, so the, the mayor's authority, however, falls under an emergency provision that therefore makes the action exempt from that requirement? Is that correct?
I'm going to ask Karen to answer the questions about the code particularly.
Okay.
You're on, Care, you're on.
Sorry, can you ask me that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so, so in the, in the public comment and then in one of the emails that we got, there was a citation to the piece of municipal code that said that to remove an object, or in this case, the tree, that has been designated a historic place, there needs to be approval from the Historic Preservation Commission to do that. I believe is what the code says. But under the mayor's emergency authority in the ordinance, that effectively overrides that provision. Is that correct?
Oh. I'm gonna, I think, I think you're confusing two things.
Okay. Move it closer to ear.
So I think, I think there are two things at work. I don't think that this requires, um, that like an emergency declaration or the mayor's emergency powers. Um, what the code does have though is an exemption, um, from the waiver provision that the Historic Commission has for emergency measures. So that's different than emergency powers. Uh, it's, it, it's, it's less than what would be typically thought of as, as the mayor's emergency powers. Um, and so, um, it, it could run the gamut from along the lines of any kind of emergency repairs that you would do to a structure. What's unique about this is that we don't have any other trees on the historic register and it is not drafted to deal with trees. It's drafted to deal with buildings. Um, and so the examples don't equate exactly, but there's an exemption for emergency measures which would, which put surrounding structures and things at risk or in danger.
Which the, the traffic or people under it would constitute.
Or the hanger next door.
Danger, okay. Thank you.
Uh, I'll go to Councilmember Kathy and then I'll go, uh, go to Councilmember Dahlhoff. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. I want to back up just a little bit, um, based on some of the things that people said at the, uh, public hearing, uh, where they were addressing these things to us, to council. I want to make totally clearly clear tonight, something I've said before, that council made no decision about this. We had no, we were told we had no power at all in making this decision. We have had very few discussions. We, on, on May the 11th, we had this discussion and there were, uh, two council members missing, but those of us that were there, um, you know, spoke and it sounded to me like moron, we, we need to hear more about this. We need to know, we, we would like to, I said, we'd like to start with preser, with preservation rather than removal. The council has had no level of input into this that would, we would even know some of these things that are coming out now. Nor would, nor have we voiced an opinion other than in an executive session where we have, we've had some discussions here and there, in an executive session where we were told directly that we do not make this decision. We do not have a part in this decision. And all of this timeline, in the midst of it, all of this was going on, council, council was about this almost the same level of knowing as the public. And when we did say something, it wasn't, it, it didn't particularly matter. And then even knowing that this tree was going to be, that they were recommending this tree be removed and moving in that direction, they allowed, they, meaning mayor and, and staff and, uh, the administrator to let the Historic Commission have two meetings where those people spent time, they did research, they did work, and what they end up with? Unanimously do not remove the tree. So this does lean on wherever this emergency thing belongs or how it's worded, or if we're going to wordsmith whatever emergency means and, you know, whatever exemptions or historic mean. This is a decision of the mayor and the city administrator. That is the message that we as, as council have received. So I do not want the public to think that their council is letting them down or did not listen to them or is not, you know, taking this seriously and that a number of us on this council do not want to take this tree down. We think we need to do exactly what the people who talked tonight said. So I just want to make that very, very clear because this is important in how this, how this is decision is made and how it turns out.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, can I just go back? Because it, there's so many meetings, so many discussions. Like, I'm still unclear, is it an emergency or it's not an emergency? That's, the verbiage she uses great, it's, I'm confused and I will own that, is administrative function. How is that administrative function occurring? Is it because of an emergency? Thank you. Can you please clarify for all of us?
I'll try. I'll do my best. Uh, no, this is not an emergency in, in the, the, the concept of declaring an emergency or the emergency powers. Um, this isn't an administrative function. The city is the owner of the tree. Uh, a property owner, in this case, the city, has a duty to remove a hazard tree. Um, and so this, the city administratively and the mayor is the executive have a duty for the public safety to remove a tree that could be dangerous to the public.
Thank you.
That, that duty exists.
Right.
Whether or not this tree is on the historic registry or not. Um, the emergency is that it is, it's a danger. Um, and that it needs to come down. And our code, the, the waiver under the historic, excuse me, under the historic, um, commission code has an exemption for emergency measures. That's not.
Okay.
Like a declared emergency. Any property owner might have an emergency they needed to deal with quickly.
I guess the challenge is, I understand that and I hear that, is the process feeling like we were included to make a decision when it wasn't our decision to make? I guess that's the challenge moving forward is all those discussions where it's like, what are we going to do? What are you thinking? What would you like to see? But then it, it didn't mean anything. To me, that's how it feels like. If it was an administrative function, it's administrative function. So why did we go through all these meetings where you're asking for our input? And if it didn't align, right? Again, that's the disconnect.
I'd, I'd like to address that. This situation is unique now and I don't know that there's another situation similar to it. It's on the historic register. It's some, I believe it's also a designated heritage tree. It is a dangerous tree. We have been internally trying to understand what our appropriate approach should be. Initially, the issue was before the council would have been if the Preservation Commission would have made a recommendation to delist, the council would have taken an action one way or another. That is the only decision that's ever been in front of the council. That has been the conversation and the presentation in the information from staff to council, even through the confusion that was created in February. That the action on the part of the council would have been, under our initial assumptions about the, the necessary procedures, would have been to receive the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission um, and to take the final action to either delist the tree or not delist the tree. It was not whether or not the tree should be cut down or not. That, that decision, and there are, I understand it's extremely confusing, but that was part of the conversation in all of the presentations that we made to the city council.
I don't doubt you. And I also don't remember the initial meeting saying it's administrative function. That was not clear, right? Opportunities for next time of communication. That was not clear.
So, so the, so the, yes, agreed.
Yeah.
We've been very confused throughout this issue because it's very unique and it's not a situation that we've ever come across before.
Yeah.
I, I would like to address, and I would like to address a couple of things if I may. So Kevin McFarland is the city's contracted arborist. He is ISA certified. He is a tree risk assessment certific, qualified arborist. He's cared for this tree for 27 years, this tree in particular. He took his time from June through October to evaluate all of the information that he was gathering from his own research and his own knowledge, as well as the research and information that he obtained from the other people who helped him. His recommendation is a legitimate recommendation from a qualified professional arborist with decades of experience in this bio region and with this tree specifically. His report was reviewed voluntarily by the city of Olympia's Urban Forester, who is also an ISA certified arborist with a tree risk assessment qualification and a municipal, a municipal specialist designation. In his emails to the city, first one unselested, second one requested, um, he indicated that his review of the report found that Kevin's methodology was appropriate, accurate, and that the city of Tom Water by hiring two additional arborists has gone above and beyond what is necessary to demonstrate, um, uh, due diligence in understanding the impacts of this, of a potential failure of this tree. Failures of this tree and portions there of it are not theoretical. They've already happened. They've already happened on May 16th. I too, on Nextdoor, there was a comment from somebody who said I was driving down this very road two years ago. And a branch fell in front of me. If I would have left my home 30 seconds earlier, I would have been hit by that branch falling in the road. And it took her and six other people to pull the branch out of the roadway. In March of 2024 this year, two people in Issaquah, five miles apart, were killed in vehicles by falling trees. One month apart, two years ago, excuse me, this year. In November of 2018, during a storm, three people in Washington State were killed by falling trees, two of them in vehicles. A report done by Kent State University with the title of human fatalities from, from wind-related tree failures in the United States from 1995 to 2007. There were 407 deaths from wind-related tree failures in the United States between 1995 and 2007. The most common cause was thunderstorms followed by high winds, tropical cyclone, cyclones, tornadoes, and snow and ice. Most of the victims were males, median age 44. Um, and the most common location of the fatality was in a vehicle struck by a tree or a vehicle that crashed into a downed tree on the roadway. This is a significant safety concern for the people that live in Tom Water and travel that road every single day. 20,000 of them, 20,000 of them approximately. This is not about road maintenance. This is not about rerouting a road or straightening it out. We have been rerouting that road for decades. The current plans for the old Highway 99 corridor maintain that right-of-way alignment around the tree. This is not about airport extent, expansion. This is about a dangerous tree that will fail at some point in the future. Fortunately, no one else, no one yet, has been harmed or killed. That's why this tree has been recommended unanimously by staff to the mayor to be removed as our duty to protect the public's safety in the city of Tom Water.
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you. Lisa, I appreciate those examples. The one, bringing that up, and I appreciate that, is when we're, I think it's on our comprehensive plan, like the urban forestry plan. With those risks of the tree and trees in our city, where is that then to assess all of our trees, not just one? Where is that in our work then assessing the risk? And then with that, what are we doing to mitigate the risk? What has been done to this tree since May 16th to mitigate any future risk? What has been done?
To this particular tree?
Correct.
We've not done anything to this particular tree.
Okay.
What we have done is there has been an extensive inventory of the street trees in the city of Tom Water, and that's a, a task of the tree board. I don't know that they've been risk assessed. Risk assessments are typically done at the request of property owners.
I mean, should we do that, though? If trees are a risk and you cited all those examples that are current and relevant, shouldn't we then address all of our trees in the city?
I will have to get back to you on whether or not that's actually been accomplished as a component of the tree inventory that's already taken place.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it.
You bet.
I just want to.
Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also appreciate everything that you're saying. I worked for DOT for well over a decade and I'm very familiar with danger tree removal. I'm also familiar with, now the timeline has grown because originally I think that we were led to believe that this happened in June. So now it's May. So now it's been an entire year. And it's such a danger and it's such an emergency, yet nothing has been done to mitigate any kind of risk. And so the public's just been at risk this whole time. So that leads me to, especially with all the feedback that we've received via email on social media platforms like Nextdoor. I'm always under, my rule of thumb is if three people are telling you you're growing a tail, you should probably look behind you. We are having our community tell us that we need to take another look. I'm not discounting Kevin McFarland. I'm saying we are having all these community members asking us to take one more look. And I understand what you're saying about the risk, but it's been a year.
The branch fell in May. The tree assessment and recommendation for removal was not given to the city until October. Correct. We've not done anything since then. Essentially, the only mitigation to ensure safety would be to close the roadway and route people around Tom Water Boulevard to Henderson Boulevard and not allow traffic on the roadway in that section. That was a decision that was untenable at this point. And I'm going to say again, and I'll take some resp, I will take the responsibility for the confusion associated with this issue. It was extremely complicated. We didn't know all of the different components that fed into needing to make a decision.
Councilmember Kathy, did you have another question?
I, I, yes, I had a comment. Um, I think that, uh, somehow this whole tree situation started from the wrong end. It sounds like staff and, um, both executive staff and staff, staff, um, started with what, how, how do we take care of this, take this tree down? We, we didn't seem to start from preservation. We didn't seem to start from, you know, an inn that could, uh, offer some preservation. But I find it interesting that in Kevin McFarland's original, um, assessment, he made clear that this tree was not dead and he made clear that you could do some, uh, preserving of this, that you could start tending to it. Tom Water doesn't have a tendency to, uh, spend much money on, on maintenance of their trees or their historic, in this case, a historic tree. And that he could do, we could do that and it could last. He di, he didn't say exactly how long it could last, but he said you could check on it in a year or two years and see how it's doing. You could do some mitigation things and some preservation things. Kevin McFarland said that. The person that you are leaning on so heavily said that. Kevin McFarland said that. The person that you are leaning on so heavily said that. And so I don't know why we are not taking anything that has to do with anything other than removal. And one of my questions is, how did this get started? Who recommended in June that you start looking at this tree? What, what, what sparked, oh, my goodness, I think this might be, uh, uh, this hazard in this tree, the state we live in and the city we live in, and we live around trees all the time, and we're suddenly now scared to death that they're going to fall on us. Who, who, who wanted to start this in June? Where did it start?
An 18-inch diameter branch, 50 feet above the roadway, fell onto the road on May 16th, partially landing in the southbound travelway of Highway 99. And because it demonstrated significant amount of decay in the branch itself, as well as the area that was, um, where it fell from, staff, rightly so, asked for a, a risk assessment. We do risk assessments on dangerous trees in Tom Water a lot. That's our obligation as a property owner of the, and the owner of this tree to do a risk assessment based on that, that level of failure.
Thank you. I, I understand what you're saying, and thank you for, for, for that. So, so the branch fell and, um, I believe that one of the people who spoke tonight said that, you know, oak trees are unique. Oak trees have rot-type stuff that runs through their branches. Oak trees are held up by the strong wood that is around them, the outer part of an oak tree, which each person who's looked at it has said this tree has that. So, uh, um, I just really think that we need to, um, please take another, another look at this or something and not just go, you know, go off with, with, I think, this just isn't, this just isn't a, a very good transparent way that we have started with this May 16th and ended up with, with cutting this tree down sometime in the spring of '24. I, I think there's some other things we could talk about, and I'm glad that tonight that the vote was to let the community speak on this and to see that this is not just a dangerous tree. This is a historical tree. This is a spiritual tree. This is a tree that, you know, ends the Kala's Trail and begins, and connects with the Oregon Trail. This is big to the Native Americans. This is not just a dangerous tree in Tom Water. This is first and foremost, a historical living being that has been here for 400 years. And I think it deserves another look and another assessment and something that we can do, um, before this decision is final and this tree is removed. Another question, what, what is a public notice that is out by the tree?
I don't know what that is referencing to. I don't know if it's the actual marker on the tree. I don't, we have not posted a public notice, to my knowledge, on the tree, near the tree.
Well, I'm just going to echo some, uh, everybody who spoke tonight and, and just put out the plea. Let's, it's kind of, kind of like our last meeting where we, you know, decided not to make a decision on our parks thing until, um, you know, we just put it off until we found out what the Supreme Court was doing. I don't think we should be making a decision on this now until we, we take some, uh, new moves and listen to some, uh, some of these other arborists and people and, um, and really look seriously at, at, uh, that preservation and all the things that could be done for that.
I, I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember Kathy. I agree with you. It's a significant tree. It's a historical tree, and it's important to the city of Tom Water. We did not start from a position of remove the tree. We started from a position of assess the tree because of a condition that appeared to be dangerous. We received a recommendation from our arborist to remove the tree. We received a recommendation from our insurance authority to remove the tree. Kevin acknowledges in his recommendation, in his report, that there are alternatives. And he said even with those alternatives, he remained convinced, and his recommendation remained, that it needed to be removed. He also stated, when asked in a council meeting, council work session, I believe it was, the March session, if the retrenchment pruning, for example, were completed, would that reduce the risk associated with future failures of this tree? And his answer was no.
I find it interesting. So, we're so worried about the wind or something taking it down in the last month, or maybe it's two months. We have had terrible windstorms, and other trees in Tom Water and all around the South Sound came down. People woke up to all kinds of things, and, um, the oak, she was still standing strong. So, um, I, I, I just, I just don't understand why we, we want to make this such a, uh, I don't even know what to call it anymore in our community. Uh, it's, it's like, it's like getting one of, one of our elders before we give them medical care or something, you know? It's not just a beautiful tree. It's a, it's a, it's a meaningful thing to the city of Tom Water and to the residents that, of, of many of the other towns. We heard from people from, you know, Tenino and South and Olympia and North and, you know, just, I, I just, I just agree with the person who said we're just panicking because of, of, um, over worried about safety and, and, uh, insurance. Because Tom Water, I just want people to know, has had zero, zero insurance claims against them.
So, I, I, I just want to make a statement at this point. You know, I, I realize that the public and the community and our citizens and everything are, are grieving this. I, I equate this to, you know, someone who looks healthy. They go to the doctor, they're, they get CAT scans and other scans and find out that they have terminal cancer. That is a shock. That is disturbing. It's a shock. It takes a very long time to wrap your head around it. And there are times when you cannot fix it. So I understand that our public and our city and our, everyone else is going through this coming to realization of the, of the actual health of this tree and, and the reality of what this tree is going to do. It is like a death of a family member. I totally understand that. But if there was another, it, there's only so much you can do. People look healthy on the outside, and they're terminally ill on the inside, and I, this is how I view this tree. And the tree cannot take out other human life. I cannot allow that to happen. So, um, Councilmember Kathy, I forward you the flyer that we had sitting there. You have record of it. This is what we're providing for the public to give them maybe a little bit more information. So, um, is there anything else to move forward or are? All right, Councilmember Delha.
I appreciate that, Mayor Sullivan. Um, uh, one thing is, uh, that I just want to bring us all together is, um, Justice Mary Yu gave a presentation recently and said, we are at our best when we disagree. And I just want to circle back to that. Um, utmost respect, continued respect. And we don't always have to disagree, but we get to a better resolution from having these discussions. So I appreciate having this space to do that. The one challenge I have is when it's stated that it didn't start with the position of removing it, then why was a permit application filed before it was even, I mean, that's, that's the challenge I have is, it's hard for me to wrap my head around that. If you didn't start with wanting to remove it, why would you file an application? I understand the, the gaps and everything. That's just hard for me to swallow. And I understand the process, and I understand the difficult decision you have, and I don't envy you. I also don't have to agree with it, but at the end of the day, I respect your position and I respect your authority, and I still don't have to like it, right? That's just, this is an example of real-world challenges that we have to work through, and I know we're going to work through it. It's just hard for me, the timing. It just, as my background as a chemist, that's just what my brain goes to. And so I appreciate you pulling all these pieces together, right? And it's, I know it's not easy, um, and I know it's challenging. And so I just want to say thank you for putting it together, and it still doesn't sit well with me, and it doesn't have to, because it's not my decision. It's the executive branch of government, and I understand that.
All right. Any other comments? All right, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is committee reports. So, Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
So, um, one second. I've lost my train of thought. So the Public Health and Safety met on May 14th, and, uh, our agenda was very light. We, um, we had a presentation from, um, uh, we have a one resolution that we moved to full council, and that was to surplus K-9 James to, um, Officer, um, Officer James Meiser. So Officer James Meiser has been taking care of, uh, has been the officer handling, uh, K-9 James, and, uh, K-9 James has been with him at least, I believe, uh, maybe, I'd say a decade, maybe less than that. So, it has been surplus. And, uh, if the full council agree to our resolution that was moved to full council, Officer James will have the opportunity to purchase K-9 James. So that was that. And then we have a presentation from, um, Officer Carlos about the use of, uh, force by the police force in Tom Water. And, uh, from what I wrote down on my scratchy note, in 2023, there were 25 incidents that involve, um, uh, mid, mid, uh, not significant, but meaningful, um, body harm. Other than that, that was all we discussed. And we were done with that. Completely lost my train of thought. So, that's what I have.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Agabi. Uh, public, uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Altheuser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met, uh, and all the items that were on our agenda were actually grouped on the consent calendar today. Um, six items on the consent calendar today came from General Government. And, uh, we do not have a meeting until the second week of June, so we have a little bit of time till our next one.
Right. Thank you. Uh, we will have Public Works Committee, Councilmembers worth up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We have a meeting on Thursday, May 23rd at 8:00 a.m. And on our agenda will be discuss a request for additional construction funds for the, um, I-5 Trosper Road Capital Boulevard Reconfiguration Project. And then we'll also be, um, looking at an inter-local agreement with the City of Olympia for the Mottman Road Pedestrian and Street Improvements Project, which is nice to see that that's going to start moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting in the not-too-distant future. I think we're still working out a time that works. Uh, now we will move to the Mayor's City Administrator Report and, uh, City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple of things today. Um, if you see a whole bunch of extra high school kids around the, um, the community today or this week, it's because, um, Tom Water Valley Golf Course is hosting the WIAA State Golf Championship this week. Uh, 44 high schools from all over the state are playing, um, at our, at our golf course. So kudos to the golf staff for organizing the event and getting the course ready and, um, uh, really having a great time. This is the second year, I believe, that we've done it, and it's a, it's a great opportunity for, uh, these kids as well as the city of Tom Water. And just a brief, um, heads up, uh, it sounds like there has been another opioid settlement, uh, this time with Kroger, I believe, for, uh, $47 million. So at some point in the future, we will come back to you and let you know the details of how much of that the city of Tom Water will, uh, be receiving. That's all I have, unless there are questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, so as far as my report, I had actually, um, attended, uh, Inter-City Transit Authority Board, and all my notes are sitting on my desk. So I will bring it up at the next meeting. I apologize. There was, seemed to be a lot of things to gather this evening for this meeting. So I was negligent in putting my notes in my packet. So, uh, with that, we will move to council reports, and I will start in Zoom, Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 9th of May, Tom Water Hopes had a meeting. Last month, I discussed how disappointed and frustrated that I've been because we were accomplishing nothing and meeting just to meet. Well, I'm happy to report that we have had some positive movements. Uh, since we've met, um, we've had a function on May 21st where we showed screenagers, uh, media awareness film, uh, discusses screen time and impacts on mental health on our youth and young adults. This was at ESD, uh, 113. I'll tell you more about it the next time. Uh, we also plan on creating partnerships with FESS to show guiding good choices to the community. Um, we did the drug takeback and took in 84 pounds and plan to do it again in October. We also plan to partner with the Opioid Response Task Force to give out medical block boxes and to see how we can work better together. So that's a good thing. Today, 21 May, I attended the Experience Olympia and Beyond, uh, meeting, where we discussed the Thurston County Destination Master Plan, which is 90% complete. Now, we're spending a lot of money on this plan to guide us, um, into the future, what we need to do in Thurston County to create a, a, a master, um, area where people want to come to visit us. So far, there's some disconnect when we engage stakeholders. Basically, senior executives, city managers, mayors, et cetera, don't want Experience Olympia and Beyond telling them what to do. So I recommended for the Executive Director and staff to create a stakeholder information briefing, basically a PowerPoint slide, explaining the destination marketing plan. Because it's, it's big, we need to bring our partners in, um, because it's going to take everyone, all cities, to execute the tasks that will be in the final master plan. Because we need to move the county forward as it relates to marketing and promotion in our regions. So we got to find a way to explain it, create partnerships, and let everyone know that this is teamwork. So they've got some work to do with that. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So on May 8th, I attended the, um, Thurston County Transportation Board, uh, meeting. At the meeting, we discussed, uh, Call for Project Process. And we had briefing from staff for the 2024 Call for Project Process, aiming to allocate federal funds to priority transportation projects and the staff covered updated grant, uh, funding program, an overview of the recommended support program to a preservation, set aside, and funded in limits. In addition, staff reviewed the active transportation and safety criteria amendment that were processed by the Policy Board. The Policy Board approved a recommendation for this, uh, for council endorsement. Council will review the recommendation on June 5th to guide their action on the 2024 Call for Project Process. In addition to the Call for Project, uh, Process, uh, staff also provided a presentation on the congestion management process, CMP, a federal transportation requirement for our region. Now that the Thurston County is a, is a transportation management area, the CMP is a systemic and regularly accepted approach to managing congestion that assesses transportation system performance and identifies strategies for addressing congestion challenges. That is for, uh, the meeting on May 8th with, uh, TRC. On, um, May 13th, I attended the JASCOMA meeting. At that meeting, we At that meeting, we discussed several items, but the only item that I think is worthy to be briefed to council is that we talked about, uh, in the past, I have talked about, um, that JASCO was looking for a, a site to, for the, for the animal facility. And because that, because presently the city of Lacey provides majority of the, um, funding for that facility. So we were told that an identified site that is ideal for this new location should ideally be less than 10 miles or six miles from the current location or from the bus line or from the transportation corridor. And Sarah would like for us to let council know that she's going to be presenting to the full council. And there's no date yet when she's going to do that of this request and what she is, uh, what JASCOM proposes. So be on the lookout for Sarah's presentation or sometimes in the future regarding our site location for JASCOM. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Yes, I had a, a regional clean air meeting and also, um, I was with Councilmember Althouser for the Regional Housing Council and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Von Holz.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Let me turn your mic on. Sorry.
Sorry. Um, I don't have another lead meeting until, um, June and so I don't have anything else to report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Dalhous.
Thank you, Mayor. Being mindful of the time, I turn into a pumpkin at nine. I had lot. And so, um, similar budgetary strategic planning. We adopted a similar policy for public comment like Tomwater recently did. I had another lot meeting and then the shoots for a lot, which we're doing legal review of the interlocal agreement with all the parties and that's it.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. As Councilmember Kathy previewed, the Regional Housing Council did meet this past Wednesday, um, uh, where we got a lot done in a brief hour and 15 minutes. Uh, the three noteworthy items, um, we appointed some new members to the Affordable Housing Work Group as well as the Homeless Services Work Group. And I'm pleased to say that we now have some designated seats for Tomwater members of those groups to, that are now filled, which is great. Uh, we also took action on our 2024 Funding Awards. That comprises various contracts with a number of nonprofit and public organizations for cold and hazardous weather, the Human Services Fund, um, the anti homelessness funds, um, the affordable housing funding recommendations as well. Um, all in total, it's about $17 million that will be going into our community to help support the housing and human services system countywide. Those recommendations now head to the County Board of Commissioners to be approved. This was, uh, really noteworthy that we were able to accomplish this in partnership with our advisory boards. One of the principles that we adopted as a council was to make sure that we are informed more thoroughly by subject matter experts. So we created these councils of people with lived experience, of service providers and, and so on and so forth, in order to provide us with recommendations, um, so that we can make sure that we center that lived experience and center that expertise as we move forward with funding our contracts. Um, the other final matter was that we decided to author a letter in support of a potential uh, mobile home project in Olympia that they are trying to secure some federal funds for. And that is, and we don't meet again until the end of June. So at our next council meeting, I won't have a new report yet. That's my report today.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Swartho.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any official meetings, but I just wanted to share that the 40th anniversary of the marathon, the women's marathon, um, event went really well. We had lots of participation from runners, uh, from all over the country, had even a runner that came in from Australia. Um, and so it was just, it was a really great event. Um, the highlight is we had Tony Ventrellis. I'm not sure if anybody remembers Tony Ventrella, but he was in our living rooms for so many years, um, our sportscaster. And so he was our MC at the, uh, at the banquet and it was, it was, it was amazing. And just to be with all these heroes, um, it was a really, really neat event. So and I appreciate our mayor attending our dignitaries event at the mansion as well. So thank you very much. It was a great time.
Yeah, it was great to see such amazing celebrities and athletes. I mean, I was just in awe of who I was actually in the room with. It was just amazing. So uh, Councilmember Kathy, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to say you saw, um, all of what was accomplished in the Regional Housing Council. Um, I know that, you know, uh, housing and homelessness and, uh, you know, mobile home parks and so forth. They're really a goal of, of Tomwaters and, uh, all of it that got done, it, it was a lot. And, um, Councilmember Althouser said, and we did this all in about an hour and 15 minutes or so. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because in case you missed it last time I mentioned it, Councilmember Althouser is now the chair of the Regional Housing Council. And I'm telling you, he moves us through the stuff. So, um, and he knows his stuff. So we're in good hands with the Regional Housing Council. And we are excited to be doing some of the goals that are headed towards some of the goals we've set in Tomwater. So thanks, Michael, for doing a good job.
Right. Thank you. Is there any other, anything else? So with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Good evening.